Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Okay, looks like we're gonna have a couple discussions here this morning with some items from the public, so we'll have probably a three-minute time limit on the discussion stuff.
I know I'm not known for my brevity of remarks, but I will be this morning, so I'll try to be brief. President Whitaker, Vice President, Gokena River County Council, I want to thank you for giving me just a few minutes here this morning. I wanted to appear before the council on behalf of Berkeley County Public Waters District. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Barnhart, who has served as our county council liaison, I believe, for both of his terms on the county council. We've been through quite a number of issues that he has helped us with and this board has helped us with. We are very appreciative. He was a very faithful attender to our meetings, and I know that that's something that you guys have to attend a lot of meetings. It takes a lot of your time, and I certainly wish Commissioner Barnhart well in his retirement from political life, and certainly if we would certainly welcome any opportunity to work with him in the future. So, on behalf of the Berkeley County Public Service District, we want to present to James Barnhart the years of commitment and support of the Berkeley County Water District. We are grateful. December 2024, your friends in college.
Very nice. I'm sure if y'all hang around, we'll love to get a picture here for the webpage, so if you don't mind just hanging in there. Did you want to say anything, Jim, or you?
No, I just, it's been a privilege to work with Mr. Barnhart. Like I say, as Greg just said, he's always showed up and was always there. We appreciate him very much. So, thank you, Mr. Barnhart, and all the best in retirement on the farm.
Well, I know if he didn't show up here for our meetings, we could never adjourn, so he's our main tool there. Any other items from the public? Come on up, state your name for the record.
My name is Scott Huber. I am a resident of Berkeley County for the past 22 years now, and if I might approach, just to show you guys a brief picture. This young lady, my mother, I'm gonna put a face to everything. He recently passed on December the 3rd due to a massive stroke. He was under the care of the Department of Health and Human Resources. And she was also under the supervision of the Sheriff's Department as conservator. There were a lot of reasons, and I'm not going to go into a lot of details right now, but she suffered greatly at the hands of these folks, and I know that currently there is a pretty large investigation into the tax office now for some embezzlement issues for her conservator, which I'm not going to name that person right now, because again, these are just allegations. I am glad that this matter is being looked into, because a lot of people have suffered because of the inactions of both the HHR and the conservator's office. When I tried to make people aware of this situation, I was ridiculed, laughed at, told, "There's nothing going on. Everything is fine over there." Well, it turns out that my suspicions, a lot of other people's suspicions, were indeed correct in this matter. It's not about any money for me. It's about justice at this point for my mother and other people who have been at the hands of these people who basically have not done their jobs, who haven't cared. It's not their relative. Why should they care? I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not sure really what to say in this matter. It is deeply concerning that these things have been allowed to continue for so long, and it seemed that a blind eye was turned to many of these things under the former sheriff. And again, I will make myself available for any questions that any of you may have. I have financial documentation. I have emails. I have a lot of information that you may be interested in seeing regarding these investigations. I'm happy to leave my contact information with anyone who would like to have it. I am happy to have one-on-one meetings or open meetings, whatever the case may be, but it cannot continue. These people count on these services in certain circumstances, and when those services are not provided, or when these people are mistreated, either intentionally or just ignored altogether when concerns are brought, this is something that needs to be addressed. This is something that needs to be taken seriously, much like allegations were leveled at me that were recently dismissed. I'm not going to get into a whole bunch of details right now, but it's been extremely difficult on our family. I'm the only one who is left to make any decisions after her passing at this particular point, and I just want to make you aware that I am a human being. She was a human being. She loved her church. She loved the community, and even in her decline with her mental state, which ultimately wound up causing her to be in a nursing home. It's tragic the way she was treated at the hands of these people. When my concerns were raised, I just feel like that I was ignored, and I know that there are a lot of other people who feel the same way, and this cannot be allowed to happen anymore, period. I mean, these things must be investigated. These things must be resolved, because again, a lot of people have suffered. I'm not the only one, and I know I'm not the only one. But I thank you for listening to me, and again, if you wish, I'm happy to leave my contact information with you, because again, I have a lot of paperwork and I have a lot of evidence to show. Again, like I said, too much to go into here today, but I am happy to present it to each and every one of you if you wish. But I thank you for listening to me and for making the changes that need to be made in this county. Thank you very much.
Any other items from the public?
Okay, so, you know, I'm Costas Hyatt. I was here last Thursday or the Thursday before. Somebody did reach out to me, and thank you for reaching out to me. I appreciate that. So, as you're aware, today I'm coming because I sent an email December the 6th, and I haven't heard anything about the public hearing. So, I'm going to give you another paper today. I'm given 10 days to get an answer. It's just time that y'all start being accountable for CPS day report in the Sheriff Department. As you're aware, there's going to be more people, and eventually we are going to seal this place up. Now, and I'm going to talk to the people that don't have the commissioner. Excuse me, guys, I always get nervous for some reason. I don't know why. But one of the things I'm saying, I'm writing today formally for a public hearing and a thorough investigation into the practice of child protective service and Berkeley County Day Report. On December 6th, I sent an email to all six of the commissioners. As a Berkeley County resident, I am deeply, deeply puzzled while I haven't got a call back. So many families are being ruined by CPS and day report. I won, was sent a day report and was dismissed. There's West Virginia laws. I made it very clear that I will be doing a lawsuit, and I promise you, I will walk out exactly what I want, because they do what they want. They don't go by the laws. They are making their own rules. So therefore, as I stand here today, I'm making myself very clear. I am going to request 10 days for the commissioner to hold a public meeting for CPS day report, because they have literally destroyed multitudes of families here in West Virginia. I should have never been put in day report. I've never done drugs in my life. I've never even been drunk. I hold a marijuana card. Even though I had that marijuana card, I was told, "So what?" Which I have a recording of that. I was violated three different ways, which I will hold that for the court hearing, but I want to make myself very clear today that I will show up every Thursday until we have this public hearing. I am not scared. My children have been taken from me. Yesterday, three was returned to my daughter. Now, all my grandkids are home. I had totaled 12 people in CPS, just because they wanted to lie. I've never done fentanyl in my life. I've never done drugs, period. I grew up around drug addicts, child molesters, alcoholics. Every Thursday, I never knew who was going to be at my house. I was never protected, but I have always protected my children. I am an over protector. I am not an abuser. But CPS made a point to destroy me, just because I came against them. I filed two lawsuits, federal lawsuits against Emily Mallory, and I'm shaking because I'm so mad, because I don't get to see my daughter because of these people not liking me, because I filed lawsuits against their wrongness, and I'm still fighting, and I will fight until God calls me home, until my daughter truly Grace is in my care again. So, I am putting you on notice. 10 days from today, I respect to hear something from someone, and I will not let this go. Thank you very much for hearing me, because all of y'all will see y'all grandchildren, and y'all will see y'all children, but I will not. So, understand that when y'all get this lawsuit, I will not drop it this time.
Any other items from the public?
Faith Hall, President Tomahawk Ruin Tan Club. I'm glad I'm not the only one that has my name on it. I was here two weeks ago. This is a deed. It is also a contract, a contract which you all choose, chose through a back-room deal several years ago to violate. And in this deed, which was a conveyance, where the Tomahawk Ruin Tan Club gave over 18 acres to the Berkeley County Council, and there were covenants with that deed. One of the covenants was a restriction that no trailers or mobile homes, which I'm sure would make Mr. Whitaker sad, be placed upon said real estate. The other covenant was that the real estate herein conveyed shall be used only for public recreational purposes, and if said use ceases, the title and ownership of said real estate shall refer to the Tomahawk Ruin Tan Club. Said covenant and restrictions to run with the land. By changing the access to Rooney Park from public recreational to public, you violated that deed. I've met with several lawyers over this issue, and simply stated, "A change to a covenant and a deed, such as altering the type of access to a property without taking legal steps," and that does not mean back-room deals. It consists of involving the affected parties, which would be the other party on this deed, Berkeley County Commission, Tomahawk Ruin Tan Club. I would advise you to change it back to public recreational access, because the property, the county deserves a park in Back Creek Valley, and it also deserves a park with adequate equipment, not just four swings and a small playground equipment. Thank you.
Any other items from the public?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm up here, and, good morning, Penny. Good morning, Chad. I'm up here for a little bit different. In true to the season, I'm up here to bring a little, little bit of the love and joy that the pastor was talking about this morning. I've, I've seen what you guys do. I've been on that side before, and I know that it's a thankless job, and you guys are doing a great job. We've got, we've got, you know, Steve and Eddie working hard on these parks. I talked to Eddie this morning about, you know, what's happening in South Berkeley, and it's going to bring something to that community that that community hasn't had. According to old Bill Butler, in about 70 years, had a park up there, so not counting the little one, that's a little pocket one up there in Bunker Hill. And I want to talk a little bit about the Day Report Center. You know, the Day Report Center is an amazing, amazing program you guys have. I appreciate what you guys do every day to keep that, keep that program growing. I think it's great for our community, what it does for the, for the health of the community. I think it's great for our community, what it does for the finances and keeping people out of jail and the home confinement program, keeping families together. I think all those things are, are great, and we should be joyful for what you guys are doing to support all that. So, thank you. Hope you guys have a great holiday. I'd like to introduce my son, Danny Jr. He'd like to say a few words. Thank you.
Good morning. I just, I'm here for the Day Report Center as well. 20 years of addiction is a long time. My name's Danny, I'm sorry, but 20 years of addiction is a long time. I've been in and out of different programs throughout our state, rehabs, detoxes, got myself in other areas, in trouble in other areas in our state, and not been able to, not been able to address my issues. I've been able to address my problems, and I've been able to get myself, my head right to get myself clean. I've got 10 months clean today. Well, in seven days, I have 10 months clean, and that's, that's thanks to Department Daily Report Center, Berkeley County. They, they didn't just help me with my addiction issues. They helped me find a dual diagnosis of my mental problems, of issues that I've been suppressing, problems I've been trying to drown and numb, and addressed them, which in turn has helped me address my addiction problem and keep myself straight. A year ago, I wouldn't have been able to accomplish nothing. Within the 10 months I've been here, the first seven months I was here, I completed a class, ACDL class at Jane Rumsey. I'm in, heading to Phase 3 through DRC to complete out, and I just, I mean, I just, I can't say nothing but good things about DRC. Every, all the staff over there is friendly, helps you, goes above and beyond. They got programs outside that they are tied up with that go above and beyond, and will do anything for the community and the people in the community that are addicted and even not addicted with issues, to help them. I just, that's all I could say this morning. Thank you.
Hey Danny, we typically don't interact, as you've seen, but I want to congratulate you publicly. I've seen the hard work that you've put in. Every time I go past here, I look for your motorcycle, and I know there's a lot of those days. It's pretty cold, but, but you're working hard too to get there. So, we've got the resources, but you have, you gotta put the hard work in too.
Yeah, sure.
So, congratulations on 10 months.
Yes, sir. 10 months and 7 days, yes, sir.
Yeah, so keep it up.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Any other items from the public?
Good morning, Commission, and Penny as well. I'm Doug Cooper-Haver. I'm a citizen of Berkeley County in Back Creek Valley, but I'm also here to say thank you for the Day Report Center. I can, many of y'all here know my story, but I'm sure the people in the audience don't. When we lost our son, and our daughter lost her brother in 2011, in 2011, there was no Day Report Center. There was no help. When our son passed away, we got 300 letters, and we also had many, many phone calls asking for help. Well, with Tim Zia and the Day Report Center and all his employees, that are 85% of their employees, I believe, right around 85%, are in recovery theirself. They know the program works. They know the, how to pull people out of that six-foot hole and to get them help, right? So, I'm here to pass on good things, right? I'm tired of the Journal Junction stuff, and it's time for people of Berkeley County to pay it forward and say thank you. The, the couple facts that I think is pretty close to being exactly where they are, but, you know, I can remember times when the county commission was hoping it was going to save a million dollars, and I think it's saving almost $8 million, or saving $8 million a year. But it wasn't about how much money you save, but we knew that you couldn't spend money without saving money. So, the main goal was, if you was able to save one life, one life, it was all worth it, because I know how important that is. And the good thing about it is, the drug overdose rate, this isn't good, went down 1% in the nation. It went up 1% in West Virginia, but here in Berkeley- But here in Berkeley County, because of Day Report Center and all the help over there and the backing of the county commission, it went down twenty-nine percent. The ambulance authority is a big part of that, the fire department is a big part of that, the sheriff's department is a big part of that, and I'm just here to give you a gift for Christmas and say thank you.
Any other items from the public?
I wanted to talk about the sheriff department, the tax, about Lisa French. What's the situation with that? Because they say she resigned. My mom was a victim of her too. So, I want to know from all of y'all, what happened? Did she get fired? Did she resign? Who all, what's going on with it?
It's still under investigation.
Because this, you know, this is bigger than the sheriff department. You got to look at the judicial system, the judges, mental hygiene, because they the one appointing them to. So, are y'all going to investigate them?
Wherever the investigation takes it to.
DHHR, they came in and took my mother. They actually killed my mother, euthanized her. So, you know, I just want to know, we, the citizen, as a taxpayer, I want to know what's going on with the sheriff department.
Again, it's still under investigation. There's nothing that I can give you any more information of than what you have.
Okay, I just want to know, because the citizens want to know, you know what I mean? Taxpayer's money gone, every time somebody steal from her, y'all raise the taxes up even more, you know? It's getting bad. That's all I wanted to say.
Any other items from the public? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda. There's no modifications or changes?
Yes, Mr. President, there is a modification. I'd like to remove the ten-ten item from the agenda and make a motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
I have a motion to approve the amended agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Purchase order log, anything for Tracy? Have any questions? No internal budget revisions? Change in status. Change in status received from the Honorable Katie Wilks, Delegating Prosecuting Attorney for Employees Who Have Taken On Increased Responsibilities and Exceptional Performances of Various Employees Within the Office, effective January the first, 2025, as follows. I have Kerry Lehman, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Two, from 107,993 to 109, 109,000. Christopher Barnhart, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Two, from 102,000 to 105,000. Robert Garrettson, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Two, from 97,000 to 98,000. Sharon Kaiser, I'm sorry, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney One, from 91,000 to 96,000. Megan Yates, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney One, from 90,000 to 95,000. Kevin Mueller, Criminal Investigator, from 85,500 to 88,968.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, eighty-seven thousand five hundred to eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. Casey Putney, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney One, from 84,000 to 89,000. Jerick Allen, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney One, from 75,000 to 76,000. Dominic Gorsini, Office Administrator, from 73,000 to 75,000. Change in status received from Marty Roberts, Fire Chief, for Tim Seibel, is that right? Sebel?
Seibel.
Seibel, okay. To be promoted from firefighter four to lieutenant, this was on January the first, 2025, with a salary change of 71,154 to 74,661. Have a request received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor, to remove Zoanne Shetley from payroll effective December the twelfth, 2024. Letter of resignation received from Honorable Katie Wilks, Delegating Prosecuting Attorney for Christopher Arnold, effective January the third, 2025. And let's see, made approval of in minutes, and I arrived a little bit late. Do we need to pull any of those out, or just get them approved the way they are, and then I'll abstain from the beginning of the meeting? Just do that?
State public.
Okay. All righty, we'll leave them in the agenda, and I will just abstain from the first part of the meeting until I've arrived. I have a resolution, apply for the LED grant, Berkeley County Development Authority, applying for the grant to support, to grow our business community. Is that, stays in there, says a letter of endorsement for the sale of alcohol for an event, a letter of endorsement to sell beer and wine and liquor to be served by K&amp;B Events LLC for an event hosted by the Eastern Panhandle Realtors, to be held on Friday, January the tenth, from 2025, from five to 10 p.m. And that being said, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Show of the move.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Have nothing for the assessment of the correction, correction of assessment logs? Board of new reports?
Jim, we've got a bid opening at ten, so.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll hold off here then. Give us a little heads up on the bid.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, you are opening bids today for thermal imaging cameras. These are personal thermal imaging cameras for the fire department. This was approved as part of their budget request from last year. Looks like you've received two bids.
Okay, the first bid is from Kijero LLC, K-I-J-E-R-O LLC, Church Street, Building Sixteen, Morgan Hill, California, is the address. Total bid price, all equipment and delivery included, five thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
How many cameras is it?
It should have been for, I believe, twenty-two cameras. That seems low.
How much was that bid?
Five thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Is that just the cameras?
Lump sum price, twenty-three thermal imaging cameras, with retractable lanyards per specifications, including equipment and delivery. Second bid is Whitmer, Public Safety Group, 101 Independence Way, Coatesville, Pennsylvania. We have.
Whitmer, I'm sorry.
Whitmer, W-I-T-M-E-R, Public Safety Group. We have a, the total bid is twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety dollars and twenty-five That's what they all say. For twenty-three thermal imaging cameras, retractable lanyards per specifications, twenty-four one ninety point two five.
That concludes. Fire Department will review those and make sure that all the bids meet the specifications.
All righty. Now, board meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
I had a Main Street meeting on Monday. Things seem to be going well over there. Their financials are within fifty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents of last year. Christmas on Main was the coldest event they've ever had, but held up to be better than most in the past, very profitable for the downtown businesses and the vendors who were involved. They welcomed in new members, Will Lorenson and John, I can't pronounce his last name, from the Mamba Sports Downtown on Queen Street. He's a new member, and also Matt Mullin from Orion Strategies. They're the three new members on Main Street Board. Talked about the passport program they've been working on, they're changing that up a little bit for the last year, cutting that cost in half. Hasn't done exactly what they've hoped it would do, so they're getting through to last year of the contract and then see what what that brings for the year after. They moved into their new offices, got a nice tour there, that is really nice, down there at the train station, Cape Girardeau Station, there on the fifth floor. It's a unique building, to say the least, and that's about all that was going on down there. They started five floors. Well, I think, you know, I said that too, but I think it's like half floors. I think you go up like a half a set of steps, and that's a floor, and you go up a half a set of steps, and that's the next floor. The way it's laid out, you really are going, every two is one, I think. Because, because like, half of the floor is higher than the other half of the floor. So, if you're up here, you can see down a half a set of flights and see what's on the other side.
Split levels.
So, there's, yeah, split levels in there. But it's a really cool place. I mean, I mean, it's nice that they made it all, all, I mean, it's been worked on and, I guess, finished for a little while there by the city, but it would still make a really nice hotel if it could be, but, yeah, it's a neat building.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Mr. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had an extension service meeting Monday. Actually, this is their January meeting that they moved to Monday because we had to meet to approve the new county extension agent, Snyder Boy, from Martinsburg, and so we did that, and then they also had their January meeting where we went over the budget and had reports from various, like Mikey and those kind of people, and that was my meeting. You didn't see him last time. Somebody else will have the pleasure of attending those meetings. They may not have one in January.
Okay.
One meeting a year, except this year was just.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Mr. Catlin?
Yes, sir. Last Thursday afternoon, had the pleasure of attending the, along with yourself, Commissioner Goguenier, the bench dedication for Ernie Reed, Justice Center, and it was very well done and very emotional for his family, of course, but I thought it went really well and a great tribute to him. On Monday this past week, I did attend along with several of you, again, the retirement thing for Bill Kearns at the Health Department. Bill has put in thirty years here for Berkeley County. Got smoking out of the restaurants and bars, went through COVID and had quite an interesting thirty years, to say the least, but he's going to stay on as their financial officer as a part-time basis starting in January, but great tribute to Bill and the work that he's done. On Tuesday, I attended, along with Commissioner Goguenier, the comprehensive plan update meeting with staff. Things seem to be moving in the right direction. It's still our anticipated goal at this point to have impact fees in place, hopefully by July first of next year, so. At four p.m. Tuesday, I attended the judges swearing in over in our room here at the county complex, and of course, the highlight was a new judge, I think Anthony might know her pretty well, Katie Delegati, and be sworn in by her father, I think, was a special thing for her, so our court system's all ready to go for another year. And then later that Tuesday evening, I attended the sewer board and stormwater board meetings, and Greg's here could probably give a better response than I can on that, but the sewer board is working great. You should have got, I think, since our last meeting, you got their audit, and things are well there, in good shape. And then on the stormwater, the appeal that we made for our individual permit, we have gotten a response, and so I don't know what that means in terms of time-wise, as far as DEP goes, but we do have their attention at this point, so hopefully something will come of it. Yesterday, along with Commissioner Goguenier, we attended the school safety meeting at the Board of Education. Most of the conversation was about, was about the safety summit that was held here a week ago here in Martinsburg, which is a special thing for our community, and others that attended from out, they said there were people from thirteen different states there at this summit.
Two countries.
And I'd say Vancouver, British Columbia had attended as well, so, but nothing more important than our school safety in terms of a community, and, you know, obviously this past week, they had the incident in Wisconsin, so it just, each time it happens, it seems like it brings it closer to home that, you know, someday it could happen here, so we'll continue to work in the efforts to prevent that. And then later today, of course, we have the dedication of the Day Report Center at one. I don't know if we shared this with y'all, but I know there's a, also a situation going on at three-thirty today, but at three o'clock today, we're meeting with Matt Umstead and I, and I think Chad, and any of you are welcome, we're meeting with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield people at the old courthouse, and we're going to walk them through the courthouse and try to develop an interest there with them in regards to the courthouse, so hopefully they'll be impressed with that situation. Currently in the Shenandoah Valley, which is a large valley, they have taken over four different courthouses in communities, and some are a visitation center, some are, one in Winchester's a museum, for instance, and I think it would be a great way to preserve our courthouse here in Berkeley County and let them bear the burden of the cost to update the thing and get it into working condition. We're going to work as hard as we can to make that happen, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Eddie?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Had the pleasure of attending Bill Kearns' retirement, like Steve had mentioned. Really have a great working relationship with him from my previous employment with the county as the emergency manager, setting up guidelines and stuff for the public and the testing facilities that was done, and then eventually vaccinations that they carried out. Really, really, really great opportunity to work with him, and wish him very well in his retirement. Had an OUPC meeting, we're working on a tabletop exercise with the school system. That's, that pretty much was the authority of that discussion. I had a pretty light agenda that day. Sean Wolford is the chair, and will be the new chair coming up, as well as Pat Marie will be the vice chair. Parks and Rec, they are at twenty-one full-time employees and a hundred and one part-time employees. They are working on an auction coming up where unused equipment and trucks will be sold, I think in January. The new hollow pavilion is, which is the last remaining wooden structure of which Steve, I think, and he and his crew tore apart from Hagerstown, brought over here and reconstructed, but the new hollow pavilion, all of that is in, just waiting to do the demo and the construction of the new one. I think they mentioned last week that the lights will be going up at P.O. Faulkner Park at the tennis courts. Christmas in the Park was very successful this year. It was something new that they did. I did not have the opportunity to drive through there or walk through there, but I understand it was very, very nice. On that board, Teresa McCabe will be the new chair, and Chip Hensel will be the vice chair. It was Tuesday or Wednesday, met with, actually, it was Wednesday, met with Jennifer Smith with the Development Authority, John Street, our commercial appraiser, John Stump and Gary, working with the TIF numbers on CMC Steel to try and determine the revenues that will be generated off of that and off of the values, which on industry, the state actually sets those values, but we wanted John's expertise there, and he graciously came in on his day off to assist us. And. And as Steve had mentioned, the Berkeley County School Safety Committee Handle With Care is a program that they've developed. It's a nationwide program, but the Marchbrook City Police with Chief George Swartwood was instrumental in getting that program here. Now all of our law enforcement agencies are involved in that program. It's really, really good for the children. Also, I had the pleasure in the privilege of attending the swearing in of the judges. That was special. And of course, this afternoon is a David Report dedication.
It has been.
We did get another $10,000 out of Charleston between now and our last meeting. The new pavilion at the park, Senator Blair gave an LEDA grant for $50,000 towards that. Warham World Park Association put up $75,000. One thing it didn't cover was new tables. Greg contacted me last week. He found $10,000 that is actually Charlie Trump's money and Charlie asked him to disperse it for himself. We're buying brand-new tables for the pavilion with the $10,000, so we should get that check sometime this week, I hope.
Very good.
I was, had to go off to a meeting down near Lewisburg for the West Virginia Corp. Well, I went down Monday and the meeting was on Tuesday. The pool is in very good financial condition. There's a few things that are taking place that are concerns, you know, all the board members, and that's some of the law enforcement that are in the lower part of the state and some of the actions that they've been taking on it. But there's some settlements that are going on. However, the, I made a comment that it sounds like that the sheriff has not done his due diligence in the proper documentation for this deputy. But anyway, there's issues that they're working through, but for the most part, the pool is in very good, sound condition, money-wise. It's growing now with the municipalities coming onboard. We, they're starting to insure some cities now. I think Martinsburg became one. Had a Zoom meeting almost at the same time with the Airport Authority. Things over there, they're a little bit slow. Some of the fuel sales are continuing to maintain, but for the most part, the sales are static. So like to see those pick up here pretty soon. It's always a rough time of the year for that. Not everybody's out flying to enjoy the $100 hamburgers that are out there. Anyway, the educational park that has been reopened, and there's also work that's going on, there's a new, not a new facility, re-purposing a building out there for other venues, possibly a pavilion being put up there. That's all that I had. With that being said, we have a couple of appointments to reappoint to some vacancies. Does anybody want to make a motion there?
Yes, I have one. On the Farmland Protection Board, George Miller's first term expired January 7th, and he did re-up for another four, you're allowed two four-year terms. So I'd like to reappoint George Miller to the Farmland Protection Board.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Appointment?
I'd like to appoint Emmylou Schaefer to the CVV Board.
Okay, I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And that one last one down here, this was probably already an oversight by me. I thought that we appointed Jill to the Airport Authority, but it was a miscommunication that she was actually appointed to the Senior Services Board. So I want to continue this appointment then for Jill for the Airport Authority, just to make it official.
Sure.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Any on it?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to nominate Troy Barrett to the Berkeley County Planning Commission.
Okay, I have a motion for Troy Barrett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We're going to take a quick break and get a couple photographs with the order board, is that okay? Then we'll come back and, yeah, if you can get that here. So we're on, take a break.
Number three.
All righty, we're back in service. Next on the agenda, service session. Excuse me. Next on the agenda is, remove the 10-10, 10-20, Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator, Deputy Sheriff Leave Calculations.
Yes, sir. It was discovered that in a few specific instances, there were some deputies that had left the department. They had, in some instances, went to work for other deputy sheriffs departments within the state of West Virginia. In other instances, they just had a lapse of service. When they came back, their, the Civil Service Code dictates that there should be no lapse in that seniority calculation as it applies to their longevity and as it applies to leave accruals. I got to give credit for the reports that are in your read ahead. This was a project that was given to Aleah Tucker, who really took this and created these detailed reports for you, her individual deputy, to show how the calculations were done and what they are owed. The initial response or the initial strategy was to give them the leave hours in their bank, but in some cases, the leave hours exceeded the cap of the bank. So in instances where leave hours exceeded the cap, the deputies are going to be paid out for that. And this will make them whole with what they were not credited for during the years of service because of the error in calculation with their leave. There's also, along with this, a correction to their longevity pay. Now, the longevity pay for deputies is not massive. It's $5 per year, per month. So it comes out to $60 per year of service. But again, the deputies that were, many of the deputies that were affected by the leave calculations were also affected by longevity. So that calculation is there as well. You had seven deputies affected with leave calculation. Four of them had to be paid out over the cap. So that's going to, that comes to a dollar amount of $20,427.52. You had five deputies affected by the longevity pay, and the payout for that is $18,030.62. For a total of $38,458.14. The silver lining to that is there's currently six unfilled vacancies in the Sheriff's Department. This is a budget-neutral fix for you. This does not require any additional money to be put into that budget. This can all be covered by those salary funds. And if approved today, this would be dispersed through paycheck.
That completes it.
That completes it. That gets everybody to where they need to be. What that does is that puts their leave, longevity, and retirement straight across the board. All numbers match.
Have they been appraised in this situation?
They have. Aleah held meetings with them. They are all very excited and complimentary of the work that was done. Many of them even noted that they did not expect as much to be done as was done, but we were committed to fix this 100 percent. They are just now eagerly awaiting to find out when this is going to go.
Good time at Christmas to do that, isn't it?
Just some clarity. So like, if they leave and come back, they're due leave while they were gone? Is that?
So if they leave and they went to another sheriff's department within the state of West Virginia, their time continues to build. If they went to another job or to a police agency that is not civil service in the state of West Virginia, then their time just freezes. So if they had four years in, they left and went to work at an unrelated job, and they came back, they should start over at four years. What had happened was CMI and our calculations would start them back at year one.
Oh, okay. So instead of coming where they were at, they started over.
They would start over, right? So when their milestones would reach your five, 10, your 15 years, and they would gain those extra hours per month, they were behind in quite a few instances. So this takes all those months and years they're behind, puts them together, and makes everything better.
Understood.
Thank you, Leo.
Thank you, Leo.
It's good to make them whole the way that it should be done. I have a motion to approve the, oh, gosh, one minute here. With the addendum to the pays for the deputies.
Still move.
I have a motion to have a second. And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Lease agreement with Hedgesville Little League?
Yes, sir. So this is a continuation of, I believe, Hedgesville Little League was in here a little over a month ago. They were directed to work with Legal to draft up a lease. This is for a property on Allensville Road. They want to build a Little League complex on. Legal has reviewed this. Hedgesville Little League has signed the lease. It's now presented in front of you to sign. I know Steve has worked a lot with this.
I would like to make the motion to do so. Can we allow the President to sign this lease?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Steve. When do they plan to reopen? Is there no idea, just kind of getting the lease going?
It's a multi-million dollar project. So the hope is, is to get one field done at a time. And over a number of years, hopefully have a complete complex, but it'll be a long, drawn-out process.
They still playing by the middle school now?
They are. They're playing back at Rooney Park. They play back at the middle school. They play different places, so yeah. And of course, they have a field there by the old middle school. They use the high school girl softball fields. So they're spread everywhere.
I remember when I, it's been a long time.
And the purpose is, is to try to get them all into one complex, you know, and then use all those satellite places for practice areas and not games.
Right.
Because when you have three or four different locations, they make their money off concessions. So now you've got to have four concessions and four different crews. You know what I'm saying? It just, it's difficult.
Been a long time since I played, but we only played between the two places, the girl softball and the middle school. We practiced out by Rooney at that park beside there. What was that called? That was?
Oh, that was, you're talking about Dalebird Charlie's Field back there.
That's where we had our practices.
That was a private field. But they actually, the younger kids play actual league games back at Rooney Park, so. And the Rurting Club does the concessions during those games.
Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries.
Mr. President, we do have one more item for your consideration.
Yes, sir.
As you know, the governor had issued a proclamation, which we are expecting to have in our hands any moment now, that converts Tuesday, the 24th, and Tuesday, the 31st, from half-day holidays to full-day holidays. We would just like some direction for the board to do.
But they're not doing Monday, is that right?
They're not doing Monday.
Okay. Because there was talk about that.
To stay in step with what we've, at least what I've been accustomed to, I think we need to stay in step with the state of Little League.
At the consensus?
Yes, sir.
I guess so.
It costs you a lot of money.
We'll get all the public notices issued for losing the offices all day on those days.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Mr. Costello, you're next on the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
So it's that time of year again. We are discussing the vacation exonerations for the ambulance authority. For those of you that may not know, anyone that has a primary residence in Berkeley County has the ability to request to have the fee removed from one of their residence that would be considered a vacation-style property. So we have 129 exonerations this year that were applied for, and we have five available for denial and 124 for approval. So we are just looking for you guys to approve for us to move forward to exonerate those from our system.
If you say it's a vacation, what if they use an AirBub or whatever the hell?
Airbnb?
Yeah.
So it has to be something that is notated in that manner in the Berkeley County Assessors Office. So if they have it listed and classified in that manner, then that's how we move forward. Typically, we see hunting cabins, river bin lots, things of that nature.
It's all Class III property, I think, in that case.
Yes.
But it is, yeah.
We've heard the ask. Do I have a motion to approve the exonerations 124?
Yes.
Still move.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries.
Thank you. I'll have these in the office for you to stamp. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All righty, let's see. Need a motion to go into executive session? We have for, we need some more people here?
Take a break.
Let's take a break. Thank you. You think Clint's going to make it, or do you know? No? Are we on? Okay. We're off a break now. We're back in session, and we're going to go into executive session for economic development. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Second. And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. We are in executive session. Like sound opposed, motion carries. We are in executive session.
I'm making motions, and the five...